It's 6:30, so we're gonna call to order.
Please.
We'll call, please.
Nancy Kapka.
Present.
Trey Pampasich.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Eleanor Flynn.
Here.
And Kirk Kaufman.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first order of business is the approval of minutes for the March 18, 2019 business meeting and the March 18, 2019 closed meeting. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Terry moves?
Second.
Dan seconds.
Thank you. Trey Pampasich.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
And Nancy Kapka.
Aye. Motion carries. This meeting includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Additional teachers granted tenure.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Pete can help me out if I miss something here, but there was a provision when Senate Bill 7 was put into place, this was, what, seven years ago? Six, seven years ago, that didn't take effect until this school year. And there's some nuances to it that I've explained in the notes there to the board, but the short story of this is that certain teachers can qualified receive tenure after three years instead of four years. There was some clarification that came last minute from the state, so we weren't prepared to bring this additional group of teachers forward last month, but now we've gotten some clarification from Illinois State Board of Education, so we're pleased to let the board know that another group of teachers are being granted tenure. And these are teachers that have received three straight excellent ratings, so three to start their career here with us. So there's the list up there. Once again, many of these teachers are involved in lots of things outside of the school day, but are also excellent teachers in the classroom during the school day. So just want to make the board aware.
Questions, Cameron?
Congratulations.
Glad to see those names up there.
Good to have so many excellent teachers.
It is.
Yeah.
All right. The next agenda item as we move forward, we're gonna start a string here of the Mark Stalyn Show.
Always worth the price of anything.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna start with something that came up during the master facility plan as we went out and did a whole bunch of community presentations. More than once, we heard requests from community members or questions as to whether or not they would be able to purchase the bonds that we'd be issuing for the master facility plan. Mark's done some work around this, so he'll talk a little bit more about this.
All in favor, say aye.
Wait, no, no, that comes later.
Okay, get everything done at once?
Yeah.
Actually, we have two important guests, and they have a PowerPoint that they'd like to go through, but Liz Hennessy has been working with our district in the background for about 24 years. So she's helped us when we were issuing warrants, when we had cash flow issues for several years, and then now as we've been buying warrants, she's also one of several underwriters that will throw bids at me that I can respond to, we can respond to when we were buying warrants. We didn't have any this year. I think some of the districts that were in their worst shape actually had better cash flow because of the evidence-based model. But Liz, and Paula Arnedo is with Liz, and they're with Raymond James. We've been working on changing the mod-- I won't steal the thunder from the presentation, because she's-- we did a little bit together, but I'll leave her the thunder in there. We've talked about increasing the amount of the bond issuance this year. We've got some ideas about how we can minimize the interest costs of the district and also increase the interest income that we make on the proceeds in the same time, which will help us in terms of adding to our contingency for those bonds, or seeing what we have left at the end and making a decision with what we want to do with those funds. So without further, let Liz come up, and then here's her presentation.
Thanks, Mark. Are you gonna?
I think, actually, Tony will give you a clicker there.
All right. Thanks so much for having us tonight. I'm gonna start with a bond market update. We've got a five-year look back where interest rates are, and, you know, they were kind of spiked up after the passage of the Tax Reform Act back in '18, and over the last four months, they're actually down 50 basis points, .50 percent or more. And we see the market really stabilizing, and rates are continuing to drift down a bit every week. So the timing is really good for this first second tranche, actually, of the district's bonds. This is a one-year look back, and we're close to where we were in November of 2016 before the election of President Trump in terms of interest rates. So with that, you know, Mark is working really in the role of your municipal advisor here with his experience and suggested to move up or add more paramount to this next offering. The district did issue the first tranche of bonds to get started in 2018, and that was for about $9 million. So here we're proposing coming back with $60 million in June of '19. Then we would have a $40 million issue in February of 2020, and the final issue in February of 2021. And that matches up with when the district's gonna need those funds to really fund the wonderful additions and the projects that were approved by the voters. So, you know, accelerating up to $60 million in this issue, I think, makes a lot of sense in locking in these really low interest rates compared to where we have been. Just so you know, whenever we look at these financing plans, we put a cushion in, because we know interest rates could go up at any time. So in the 2019 issue, we have 20 basis points, we have 75 basis points in the 2020 issue, and a full 1 percent cushion, if you will, in the 2021. So we want to make sure we're always able to deliver on that promise y'all made to the taxpayers. And right now, with all things equal, it was a $65 increase on a $300,000 home, and we're down to about $62. And based on interest rates today, even with these cushions, $12 million less interest over the life of the bonds. So it's really, you know, part of being cautious when we went out, not knowing what the market's gonna do, and then being the benefactor of this fabulous interest rate market.
Good.
So the other thing that we talked about with Mark was possibly making these bonds not only federally tax exempt, that means the interest people earn on these bonds, they don't have to pay federal taxes, but also state tax exempt. And today, we ran some numbers on an option for this. If we issue the bonds through the Illinois Finance Authority, you pay a fee, but you get not only federal tax exemption, but state tax exemption. And that is really a hot topic now, especially as Governor Pritzker starts to move forward with the graduated income tax plan. People are looking for ways to pay less taxes. Also, with the Tax Reform Act and not being able to deduct more than $10,000 of property taxes on your federal income tax return, investors are looking for ways to save money on state and federal taxes. So based on our option today, the net savings on the 2019 issue alone from double tax exemption is almost $365,000 over the life of the bonds, and over the whole financing plan, because it ripples through, is over $590,000 in interest savings. So we're excited about this option. There's a separate approval where the IFA has to approve the district, but given your strong rating, we don't see any issue there at all. This is just a picture of how your bond issues form that level debt service. And let's go on now to the retail bond sales plan. So I'm gonna let Paula tell you a little bit about our tremendous strength in DuPage County here.
Yeah, so this slide just shows the Raymond James commitment to the state of Illinois. So right now, as of today, we have 121 retail locations throughout the state with 278 financial advisors. So that includes 131, almost 131,000 accounts and assets of over $24 billion. And we have our Chicago Public Finance Office that includes Liz and I and other bankers in the office, in the Chicago office. And our underwriting department is also based here in Chicago. So there's like four to five underwriters here in Chicago that are easily accessible to us once we do the sale of the bonds. And we also have the trading floor, the sales and trading office here in Chicago, so we have a huge sales force here in our Chicago office. And then locally here in DuPage County, we have, as of today, we just learned that there's a Downers Grove office here locally in Butterfield Road. So that's gonna be good access to our community members here who want to purchase the bonds. And then there are other locations as well in Itasca, Naperville, Oak Brook. So there's really a huge Raymond James retail presence here in DuPage County, so.
Thanks. So, you know, how do we make the community members aware of the bond issue? We're going to post an advertisement. It's called a tombstone ad. It's rather-- we don't kill anybody, but that's what they call it, because it has to conform with our highly regulated industry about how we advertise bonds. So we're gonna put that in the Daily Herald each week before the sale of the bonds. We'll also have electronic media have a link to the district's website with this ad as well. We'd also like to have a community meeting. I think it's a great opportunity for the district to update the community on the progress of the plans and to allow individuals to get their name into us if they're interested in buying bonds. So, you know, municipal bonds are really a high-quality choice, especially with the district's strong bond rating. It provides capital, protection. We're looking at a fixed interest rate, so there's a known cash flow, exempt from federal income taxes and now through the IFA, also exempt from state of Illinois, and then specific maturity dates. And when you look at, it's tax day, right, so perfect for this, we have the individual federal tax brackets, and there are quite a few of them, and you see the various income levels for married and filed jointly. If you think about tax exemption, if your tax-exempt bond only yields 2.5 percent, for example, if you're in the 37 percent income tax bracket, your taxable equivalent yield or return is gonna be just under 4 percent. So you can see kind of the value, the bang for the buck that investors get. Even at these low interest rates, the after-tax returns are very good. And just to update on the district's rating is AA, and a little history about when the district was most recently upgraded. And then here's just an overall view of credit ratings. The bonds can be purchased in minimum $5,000 amounts and multiples thereof. So unfortunately, we can't do any orders for anything less than a 5,000-type order, but I think most bond investors are used to that. And with regard to the district's current AA rating, Standard and Poor's rates that with the words "very strong capacity to meet obligations," so I think investors will be attracted to that. The security for your bonds are the very highest level, the gold standard of security, unlimited tax general obligation bonds. So this is a separate levy, as you know, on your tax rate sheet, that will be levied in the amount to pay exactly what the debt service is on the bond. So they're very, very safe. This first issue has bonds maturing from December 1, 2020 through 2031. We expect the coupon rates to go from 2 to 5 percent, and the coupon rate is a little different than the yield. The yield is the actual return, but oftentimes investors want a higher coupon, so if for any reason they do need to sell the bond, it's an attractive bond to the market with a 3 or 4 percent coupon rate. So that will be one of the characteristics. We expect the bonds to be sold around June 5 and close around June 27.
Sure, because I want to make sure that's really clear. So when somebody buys a $5,000 bond, and we want it to only cost 2.5 percent to us and the taxpayers, they're willing to pay a premium. So they'll pay more than $5,000 to get a $5,000 bond, and so we may only issue $55 million worth of bonds to get yields $60 million that we need to fulfill that. So the guy's paying more than $5,000 so that his true yield for him is only 2.5 percent, but it has a higher interest percentage on the bond. Makes it easy for him to sell later on if he wants to get rid of it for some reason, because it's a long-term bond. So it's just a more attractive interest rate.
So he's paying more with the anticipation that he'll get that money back later on?
He's paying more, but he still only gets a $5,000 bond that yields 4 percent, but he actually paid more than $5,000 for it, so his true income yield is less.
Less than 4 percent.
Because he paid more than $5,000 to get that bond.
And then that maturity date, does he have--
Semi-annually interest, he will get 4 percent, but he has much more than $5,000 invested to get--
Yeah, to get that. And does he have to wait till 2031 to sell?
No, no. There's series every year, so we'll be paying those off.
Every year?
Some principal will be paid off every year going towards that. Some people want the longer bonds, they will hold those bonds up to '31.
Yep. And people can buy bonds wherever they want on that maturity schedule, 2020,
all the way to 2031 for this particular issue, and anything in between on those maturities. And the thing we do when we want to focus on the local community is we make retail orders a priority. So the thing that's gonna drive, of course, your interest rate are the big institutional buyers, but we want to make sure that anyone who wants a bond is gonna get that bond and isn't gonna be weaseled out by a big institutional buyer, because they're gonna want to snap up these bonds. So we're going to make retail, and local retail in particular, a priority order.
Okay.
Some of the questions we get is, you know, we talked about the minimum purchase amount. Who do I contact? What if I don't have an account at Raymond James? So there's two options. First option is open account at Raymond James for the purchase of bonds. And you may transfer the securities out of there to your own account later if you want to do that, not keep the new Raymond James account. Or, secondly, you can contact us and let us know that you would like the bonds to be purchased in an existing brokerage account. So for example, let's say you have your securities at Merrill Lynch, Bank of America Merrill Lynch. We would include that broker dealer in our selling group so that you could buy your bonds directly in that account. Another question we get is, well, what if I have my bonds at a trust account at a bank? So it is likely that local banks will be very interested in this issue, so we'll make sure they are covered and able to buy bonds. However, as an individual, you're not guaranteed that you're going to get that bond from your trust department if they don't have the maturity you want. So it's better if you want, for example, the '29 maturity, that you buy that directly through Raymond James, so you can guarantee that you get the bonds maturing in the year you want, because retail, again, has a priority. Any questions?
Yes.
How did you select $60 million for this year's debt issuance?
Well, we worked with Mark. We originally started at 40.
It was originally 40, and then we tried 50, and the push here is that if you go out too far with one bond, the interest and principal payments will make it so that the later bond payments will have to be issued in a different pattern, and so you have to work those together. That's really what Liz does for us.
Put the puzzle together.
I thought I'd say, let's try 60 million, and she'll do runs, which will show how we can make it all fit in this type of schedule and still issue subsequent issues and still keep the cost of those bonds that are in line with our promise to the community, the $65 maximum. But this fits in really nicely at 62, and this is doing a $60 million. So this is where we think we should probably ride with this.
And the first test is we have to look at the district's draw schedule, and they have to expect, you have to expect to spend the money within three years.
Okay.
Okay, so that is IRS rule.
Okay.
You can't just sit on it for five years.
Okay.
So once we determine that, which we fit easily into that test, then we look at the total debt structure, as Mark said, and putting those pieces together. And we're keeping the bonds very level, so the swing year is the very last year. Because rates have come back so far, we can accomplish lower debt service cost overall than what we were originally projecting by far, even up fronting the $60 million. So given that it meets your expenditure draw schedule and given that rates are so low, we determined that this was the best number to lock in.
Our project should be completed within three years, so we could technically issue the entire amount this year under the IRS regs. And if you think rates are gonna go up over the next couple of years, why aren't we issuing the whole thing now? That's kind of, I'm just--
Yeah, that's a really good point. We don't know what rates are gonna do.
No, no one does.
We hope they're going to stay somewhat stable. But the one thing we are super conscious about is not ending up crosswise with the promise to the community, making sure we can lock in that 65 or below. And part of the way we do that is by issuing over time, because if the bonds are out less time, the three items that enter into your interest costs are the time the bonds are out, the rate, and the amount. So by issuing them in pieces, we're saving on that time factor.
Right. You'd be paying interest on bonds that otherwise you would plan to issue at a later date, and you wouldn't have to pay--
Because you've already started the interest running before you actually are using the funds.
Right. You end up with higher interest. Now, the positive thing is when we issue 60, we'll be able to invest that on our side.
Without arbitrage.
Up to, yes, up to the arbitrage, up to what our net cost was. There's a limit to it. We actually can invest at a higher rate, but then we lose anything over our true interest cost to the Fed, we have to rebate it. So it's just having it out for a shorter term, which is more in line with the original plan was.
And how much are we anticipating incurring over the next six to six months?
In terms of--
Master facility plan?
Oh.
Expenditures?
We have a schedule that, I mean, since the whole thing is only three years, you know, we, so we're still messing with some of the phasing once we get these bids in.
Are we gonna incur 60 million over the next six to 12 months?
Six to 12? No, probably not.
Okay.
It was 40 was the original plan. It's probably in the 45 range, is what I'm guessing.
So we are accelerating beyond our needs in the short term, but we're doing so to maximize the interest rates.
And the interest rates are so low, we can do it and still keep the promise.
And still keep it below the $65 per $300,000 value household?
Yeah.
Through the first two phases, which takes us through next summer, right? We're looking at somewhere between 45 and $50 million in building costs.
Okay. Yeah, we're issuing June, and then we're gonna issue again following February, and then the following February after that. So we're trying to keep it as short as we can to get it all out there and lock in the rates.
You expect there's an appetite for 60 million?
Yes. Yes. We've had lots of conversations with our underwriters about it and very confident.
Since, you know, the Daily Herald has a good presence in DuPage County, but Downers Grove, Woodridge is, I think suburban life has better coverage there.
Do you?
Uh-huh. I mean, you could check on that, but--
We bet we will.
I think that might be a better vehicle for getting this word out to our District 99 core.
Downers Grove and Woodridge specific. Thanks for that feedback. We'll look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. This is great news, I think. So thank you.
All good news.
This is exciting.
Act Two in the Mark Stalyn Show will be a third quarter financial report.
Is this gonna be as exciting?
It's, there's some excitement to this one, actually. So we have the, we have bad news and we have good news. The bad news, we kind of already hit at the six-month window when we did the December roll forward with the $385,000 cut in state funding and $93,000 reduction in corporate personal property replacement tax that were not even hinted to at the beginning of the school year. But we have some good news, because interest rates, we've been really aggressive with our liquidity in terms of the banking. We were able to get a 1.7 percent increase in our rate, kind of under threat of moving our banking to a different bank, and got a good response back from that, so we're earning over 2.4 percent, or 2.4 percent on just our checking account, basically. And we've, so we have already met, and I'll get that in the, there's really not much here, other than we are down on the total fund balance, but it fluctuates like that. We've been down to this point before. It's just really the timing of collections. And as we get to the revenue side, the state, in spite of their cuts, still owes us $1 million that we're waiting for them to release. So let's go to the next revenue piece, Tony. So revenues collected, we're 100% on our taxes, which is normal. Replacement taxes are down because it's on a reduced schedule. And then the third item, interest income, we've already met our interest income goals, and so we projected to get another $140,000 of interest by the end of the year, based on investments we already have. So some of the timing of, and sometimes the early taxes come in earlier because of some structures that we've had. We actually collected some before June, so we might have a little bit more interest there. And the, really, the interest income will help offset the replacement taxes at least, and so we still have the $385,000. If you look at the second to last row there, the general and other state aid, 54 percent compared to 88 percent last year. That's kind of a poor comparison. These are cash basis numbers, and last year's $5.2 million had some payments from the prior year that were recovered at the end of the year, or that by this time last year. So there's only a couple percentage really difference if you start to grind out these numbers a little bit and analyze on a purely comparative method. So if you go down to the expenditures, the piece that's gonna, we think will be a good, get it up, there we go, 70 percent for salaries, everything there is tracking well, benefits are tracking well. Really, there's no surprises in here. Capital outlay, we think, will be a little bit under by the end of the year, primarily on the educational side, for some technology that we were able to hold back on that really was something, a timing difference for us. But tuition on the bottom, we've looked at the kids that we have in the system right now, and unless some unusual move-ins come in, Elisa Mavala, who does a great job with this and keeping kids in district as opposed to sending them out, we've sat down and we guessed $300,000 that we would come in under budget on that, and she confirmed that right now it looks like that. So that will help us make up for the mandated CATs and the state money. So we still have a good feeling about this, and we think that we should be able to keep this budget balanced by the end of the year. So we'll see how it looks, but it's a rough ride this year.
You're a wizard.
No, no, it's, you know, there was some luck involved, but some of it, you know, we did work hard on the interest, and we're doing a pretty good job with that right now. That's some of the stuff that they can manage, some of these other things you really can't manage. You really can't manage tuition any better than Elisa's doing it, you know. There's gonna be kids moving into the district that need special placements. So that's it for that group. I do have a ton of stuff tonight, so I'm gonna try and keep you here, or not keep you here till midnight.
Thank you.
I know how compelling it is.
Yes.
So that's what I think our next--
Any questions on the financial report?
Yep.
All right. Next one, Mark?
Tax--
Resolution on 2018 tax rates.
All right. And each year, this is pretty simple. Each year, we, in November or December, we issue a levy request. It's kind of blind. We don't know what our assessed valuation's gonna be. We don't know what our new construction is gonna be. And then we find out in March, the county clerk, who is a new clerk this year, provides that information to us and says, you've got five days to tell us-- that information to us and says, "You've got five days to tell us where your tax cap will only allow you a rate of X, and your request is higher than that, so I'm just going to prorate it against all of the levies and the individual funds unless you tell me a different way to do it." And so, the anticipation when we released it was that we would take it out of just the educational fund. But we did get a little, we were hoping that we'd get 1.5% on new construction, we only got just under 1% on new construction. And we thought that there'd be a little bit bigger increase in the overall assessed valuation because of additional new construction. So, our rate is lower than we thought. It's still going to generate the revenue that we needed for this year, or for X, this will be for 2020, 21's operating year. And it's, we ended up taking a little bit out of the building fund, $314,000 out of the building fund. Education and the building funds have the largest fund balances, they will be able to absorb that in there. It was money that we were hoping to get, but not really planning on in terms of the budget or our projections. So, we just took it out of those funds rather than spreading it equally across all the funds. And typically, we just take it out of the ad fund. So, no big surprises here, other than we were hoping for a little more new construction. Bottom line is that our total levy produces a tax rate this year of $1.95, up from last year of $1.91. We anticipated, because of our bond issuances, because that includes our bonds, that it would go up six cents for just the bonds. And so, it ends up going about, you know, maybe 3%, 4% there, so, cents, not percent. So, we're, we actually are not seeing quite as big an increase as we anticipated, because, only because, and only because our assessed valuation grew by 4.5%. So, our rate will drop every year because of that. It's a factor of how big our assessed valuation is, what we ask for is divided into it and produces a rate. So, we're on target with our rate. I think we're still going to have the second lowest, depending what happens with Hinsdale, maybe, maybe we'll get to first, I don't know. Second lowest tax rate in DuPage County for any school. Okay, so I think, any questions on this?
Without bonds?
With or without bonds, when we put the, yeah, we're, even with our bonds, we have a very low bond cost. We were, during the referendum, we had total rate less than every school except for Hinsdale. And Hinsdale has 1.5 times assessed valuation per kid that we have.
That should be a headline somewhere.
Hmm?
It should be. It should be a headline somewhere.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, questions on tax rates?
The next two items are actually pretty simple.
Two more acts here, one on food service management contract?
Right, food service renewal is something, we have a five-year contract with Chartwell's. We're in our fourth year, our third year of renewal, but our fourth year with them. And we've had mixed reviews from them, about them, some people are unhappy with the food, some people are saying it's okay. Our total performance has not changed much from last year. We're at a point, though, honestly, that even as this matures, after the end of the fifth year, it'll be very difficult to tempt another company to come in while we're under construction and while the cafeterias are in flux. So, right now, we don't, we do nothing to rock the boat with Chartwell's, and they're going to go through this storm with us, they feel committed to doing that, and we're hopeful that we can keep them throughout the whole process. And again, the à la carte sales and the main meals are pretty stable with them. And so, and they did a good survey towards the end of the year where they had three different, really different entrees, and let the kids sample them all over, every kid who wanted to take a piece, could take a fourth of this burger and try it and see how they liked it. And it was a cheeseburger with an egg on it, you know, they're trying to, which I love, a lot of people like that, some people don't like that. But that's, and one school that wanted, another school, there was another chicken-
Is that how you make your decisions on?
No.
Or no eggs?
That was something they brought out this year, so it wasn't-
Chicken and waffles?
That I haven't had, I know, people like that. So, anyways, we're recommending the renewal of that contract, it's, based on our original RFP, they have to follow the CPI that we want them to, that affects our revenue stream for that year, doesn't include new construction, so their increases are going to be 2.1%, which is actually a couple of years ago CPI, we had 2.1 a couple of years in a row. So, this is off our contract, and ISB would approve it.
So, that'll be another five-year contract, or that'll just be-
Well, we, actually, there's some, Todd Drayfield, I give him credit, the business manager at 58, has worked on getting some legislation that allow us to put out a different kind of request for proposal, where we only, we, right now, we have to take the lowest price bidder, and we have to, and if we do it under some other criteria, we have to give at least 51% to that lowest price bidder. And so, we're working on, and there's only two states, I think it's New York and us that are doing that, that have that in the whole federal program. So, we're looking to try and get that, so we can use it as a factor, cost is a factor, but service quality food, different things can be, you know, more factors with the heavily weighted bias when we make the decision. And so, maybe by the time we get out through this five-year, we'll be able to do something. But again, we're going to have a very difficult situation for some of these bidders to get an idea of what they're going to be serving in, what the survey is going to look like, what the kids, so, I have a bit concerned about that, so we're trying to keep a connection with Chartwell's to get through that.
Once the facility plan is done, and the schedule changes, and students have a full lunch period and a much different eating environment, I imagine we'll be a different kind of competitive market.
And Chartwell's has participated in the-
Yes, they've been very helpful.
The survey planning, and they're really excited about the long haul too, so if we can keep that going, it'd be great.
All right, any questions on food service?
I just wanted to ask the folks that are in the cafeterias about-
They're not in the cafeterias. I shadowed them both for a day, they don't do lunch.
They don't do lunch?
I've probably only eaten lunch in the cafeteria, like bought food from the cafeteria, like maybe a handful of times, and that's, it has nothing against the food, I just prefer, like, to spend my time somewhere else, I guess, yeah.
So, you bring your lunch?
Yeah, I bring my own lunch, so I can go to-
Because we want you to eat lunch.
Yeah, yeah, I do bring a lunch. I just usually am in a resource or something.
Okay.
But I've heard good things. I know the frozen yogurt's a big hit.
I don't know, I've eaten lunch in past years in the cafeteria, and I can't give like the highest ratings to the food quality. But, you know, now, this year, I really, I don't even spend much time in the cafeteria, I spend most of my time, do other things, then when I get home, I'll eat something.
Oh, so you don't eat at school at all?
Yeah.
Oh, no, you need energy throughout the day, you need to eat.
He lives on knowledge.
Oh, man.
That's my system.
It is really deep in here.
Makes me look like a priest.
The gavel's a weapon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are his risk insurance.
I need some of that.
Back to Mark.
Yeah.
This is a requirement of the MFP, and just in practical terms, that we have this coverage, it's a very, it can actually pretty competitive price for this. It'll give us $126 million worth of coverage over the entire three-year, three-and-a-half or so year period. And it covers us for any kind of unforeseen damage that occurs to the building or to the builders or people involved in the, because we're going to have pretty busy buildings with construction. And it's something we just have to buy. So, we did get three bids, Liberty, Liberty because they have the whole package with us already, was able to be very competitive, and we kind of knew they would, but we had to bid it out anyways, just to make sure, they knew that there was competition.
What I usually explain to my clients is that you, you have a contractor, he has liability insurance, but their liability insurance doesn't cover lightning striking the building, and once we've paid for work that's been put in place, we, it's ours now. And so, this is the kind, this insurance kind of steps in and covers that gap, that risk.
And this is what they needed at Notre Dame.
That is so sad.
Well, this is, this is, we should be doing this, so. Mark says it's a good rate, that's, that's good enough for me.
Thank you.
Mark was able to bundle and save with his insurance.
Oh, no, that's somebody else. This is customized.
Thank you, Mark. The MFP bid progress.
All right, Jim's going to update you on the progress of bids.
Real quick, Tony's going to put up the March 7th MFP Phase A bid results. But upcoming, just so you're aware, we have a bid opening on the 25th for Capital Projects of April, and also on the 25th, another MFP for bleachers that will happen, hopefully in the fall of this year. So, two coming up on the 25th. The capital bid I will bring to you for approval on May 20th. Also, we had a bid opening on April 11th for Phase A, that was for the fire alarm and sprinklers, et cetera, and I'll be bringing those results to you on the 20th of May as well. So, out of those three, on the May 20th, we'll be looking for approval of the Capital Projects bids. The bid on March 7th, as you can see, we had 88 bidders, a slew of different projects, a lot of contractors want to point out that we combined prior to the bid and did an addendum to the doors, number 12 and number 13 for both north and south, and the overhead doors, I know it says doors, but it's really the overhead door for the dock door at north. We're just going to quote that out, the budget number's about $15,000. So, we, no, no bidders, didn't think we'd get any, so we'll just get three quotes for that to complete all of these bids. On the bottom, you can see it's around a little less than $10 million. In our next segment, we'll be talking about budget, a little deeper, so I won't go into how that compared to the budget, but we're in pretty good shape. The market out there's tough, it's, we expected more bidders for this round, but the good news from where I sit is I think the bids came in at some good numbers, even though we didn't have a lot of competition in some of the categories of the bids.
And Jim commented to me the other day that the bidders that are coming in, a lot of folks we've done business with in the past, and, you know, quality companies.
Many of these we're very familiar with.
You know, I would find it helpful if there was just, if there was another column that was just like a very, very, couple, couple-word description of what this is. I mean, some of these things, it's wrecking, I figured out. Do we have services south, I don't know.
Yeah, we can give you a highlight of what each of those packages is. Yeah, I think we have a single line somewhere that's-
Yeah, just a couple words, not, not a paragraph or anything like that, just so, you know, tile, I guess.
No, I think the bid package has a title on it, doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah, so we can give you the title of what that bid package is.
So, demo, you know, as we go down, there's many, but we're trying to combine north and south and the work together so we can get a better price, but I can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
We'll send that out in board updates.
Yeah, next time.
So, you can see it.
Thank you. We'll be keeping Jim busy, that's for sure.
We are. Speaking of keeping Jim busy, Master Facility Plan progress, we have a little longer representation than usual tonight, because we had a core team meeting last week? Was that a week ago?
Yes.
Yeah, last week, where we, we got some updates, but we're, you're going to notice the theme is changing a little bit from design to construction now. So, most of the updates that the boards received over the last year have really been design processes. We're going to talk a little bit tonight about how we're actually going to get this stuff built, and in what timeline. So, one of the things we've been talking about over the course of the year are these prototype classrooms, and some feedback from students and staff on how those things have gone. Really, we have another year to kind of try out furniture around the rooms. The rooms where we are updating furniture this year, it's a lot of specialized spaces, some special ed classrooms, TV, radio, and the rooms that we're adding that are traditional classrooms this year, we're going to reuse old furniture, so we have another year to kind of evaluate furniture before we have to do a big furniture buy. So, a lot of specific type of furniture this year, not necessarily general classroom, but we'll give you kind of a peer into how this is going in the classroom so far this year. So, Tony, if you'll advance. So, prototype classrooms here are part of our modern learning spaces thread and design team that we've been talking about. So, the layout here on each slide, what you'll see is the room number up at the top, and then the feedback from the student surveys on four, or, sorry, five measures, is it five, yeah, five measures. So, how the furniture worked for independent work and group work, and then just a feedback on the look of how the furniture was. So, the look of the table, the look of the chair, and the look of the teacher furniture package that's there. So, it's usually a desk, a podium, a chair, those kinds of things. So, Tony, can you go back to 201 real quick? So, that gives you an idea, so this is room 201 at north, you can see some of the whiteboard surfaces in the background, the lighting, the flooring, and the furniture. Remember, we're all changes that we made in these prototype classrooms.
So, that's exactly as, everything is exactly as, it's totally prototypical. The walls are what you anticipate, the ceilings are what you anticipate, everything is prot- okay.
Correct. Now, the actual flooring might be different in the classrooms we end up in. The lighting, what we've heard, I'll show you the summary on that in a little bit, lighting will be a little different. We've heard some things about the, each of these things, that when I get to the summary sheet, you'll see some feedback about all of these. But this is the idea of the first round with this, this set of furniture. So, 201 features like these dual tables, two-person tables, large chairs with backpack storage underneath. Go ahead, Tony, the next one. Where North High 272 features, this is a little smaller of a classroom, so you can see the student chair with tablet, that's one of those smaller tablet arms that swings out. But what's interesting about the new tablet arms is that they can swing all the way to the other side, so they're kind of ambidextrous-
Right, left.
Right or left. So, any student can use those things. So, as we talk about flexibility, then we don't have our left-handed students in a desk that doesn't fit them. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to comment, this is the room that I was in last semester, and we never had the walls or whatever, but I would say independent work, that's a pretty accurate rating, because, only because the left-hand accessibility was great with those, but for my class was English, so a lot of times you were reading and like with a laptop or like writing as well. It was just like a small-sized desk to be working with. And also, they just found that the backpack compartment underneath was too small overall. And then also, the mobile file with the cushion tops, people really liked those because they, I think we, it's a smaller classroom, so we had maybe two or, two or three of them in there, but they were nice because a lot of times they were near outlets, so if you were working in the middle of class, you could go sit on them and charge if your Chromebook is dead. And then the teacher desk, I got some feedback from my teachers as well, and they said the teacher desk and podium combined isn't necessarily the best thing, because a lot of times teachers like to have their desk off to the side and then the podium at the front of the classroom where they do the majority of the teaching. So, that was just most of the feedback I heard.
So, Hank, the, so you're choosing the furniture based on how big the classroom is and what's taking place in the classroom? Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of factors that went into what we put in the prototype one. You're going to see one in a second where we didn't size properly at North High, and it got really tight and a little claustrophobic because of the furniture, so, which will get moved to another room next year, but that was all part of these trials. What Ellie said is, what we heard consistently across both schools, the backpack storage under the chairs makes the chairs wider, but it doesn't really fit a student backpack because the height depth underneath, it's really just, kids' backpacks are bigger than the storage that they give us. So, it makes the chairs bigger, but it doesn't make the backpack storage actually usable. So, we will probably avoid the underchair backpack storage moving forward.
And one, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Ellie. Go ahead, Ellie.
One last comment about like the individual desk versus, I know some other classrooms had bigger desks that were kind of made into like pod-type of things with multiple students at a table.
Can you go back one, Tony? That'd be what Ellie was talking about.
So this is, this is good for, I, what I heard was like this type of classroom was good for classes where you're generally doing more independent work and it's more of like lecture style. So like math class, that type of thing. But then the individual ones in the next slide are better for classes where there's a lot of presentations because you can move the desks, because they're all on wheels, into like an audience format. Or like a lot of time, or like if you're, yeah, basically classes that you give a lot of presentations in and stuff like that, it's helpful because you can rearrange the classroom.
This is a graph where the actual quantitative five for independent work does not match up with the qualitative responses. So we hear, we heard a lot from the written responses and then from the other classrooms with the large tables. If students are going to have to do independent work, they do not like having to share a table with somebody else. Right, that if you're working on your own on something, it's just not comfortable bumping up against somebody else and being stuck next to them and those kinds of things. Student feedback was go for the individual teacher desks and we can push them together when we need to do group work.
So since it's been about 10 years since I was in high school? Yeah, I have a, so the backpacks under the seats with the change of the room. So I assume prior to this, you had them next to your.
Actually, once we put these in, they still sat next to them because they don't fit underneath. So now you got a much bigger chair with a backpack next to it.
So what are we gonna do with them? Little like wire things underneath for books and such, but not like a backpack compartment. Yeah, and it's just easier to have it right next to you so you can just add some.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
I don't think most people would put it underneath because they would rather like, there's times where you go grab something. You're always reaching in and grabbing things, so trying to pull it out from under is kind of like not gonna happen.
I was thinking, that's kind of how I remember, so I was wondering if it was even a big deal to reach under there and have that in a safe space or anything, okay.
Is it a problem with having them on the floor? Is it gonna be in the way of?
Yeah, the teachers trip on them. Yeah, and that's what we were hoping to do is to get them out of the way. But what we ended up with was bigger chairs and the teacher still tripping over the back.
Aren't there chairs with better backpack devices?
The other ones put the hooks on the back. And those are just as bad because it just makes, now, you have this stuck footprint that it makes it hard.
Well, plus a chair would fall over, wouldn't it, if you get up?
When the student stands up, they tend to flip over, yes.
So it sounds like.
Charing group?
Sounds like the students are okay with how it exists today, but teachers kind of.
Teachers would prefer them out of the way, but.
But if you put them under these desks now, looks like they could just sit under the desk here, right?
It depends on the room and the desk.
I think also these kind of tables, it's hard to have a table where the chair moves and the table also has wheels because even though they, the wheels have locks, they inevitably become unlocked. And I have that problem where, you know, you're taking a test, you're leaning on it and all of a sudden the table is moving forward and you're moving forward with it. And your test is running away from you. So it's like, if one thing is stationary, the table is nice to have as like without wheels.
Well, would it, would it help to have a rack on the wall and your backpack there and?
No, students want them near them.
I have to get up and walk to it to get my pencil.
You should have had your pencil with you.
We, we talked to other schools that did recent construction projects that had backpack cobbies in their classrooms. So the idea was you'd come in and check your backpack in. And we just heard that it was wasted space, that students didn't actually leave them in there.
Because of what Kirk shared with us.
I mean, it's, whether you give them someplace to put it or not, they'd rather have it right alongside them so they can easily get into whatever and, I mean, I just.
So they need saddlebags.
As an accountant, I have lots of pocket protectors that we could give the kids.
I was just thinking, well, some of us did go to high school where there were no backpacks. And we survived. Of course, our arms are two feet long, longer.
Can you jump two ahead for me, Tony? I'm gonna keep this moving along here. All right, 308, this was the classroom I was talking about where furniture is way too big for the space that's involved. We ended up with the way that the schedule works, that we actually needed 32 desks in here. You can see they're very large surfaces, they're very large chairs. It just didn't work in this space. So we're gonna move all of this furniture into a larger room next year. You can see by the ratings, not impressed, but most of that just came back to, if you look at the comments, is just too big a furniture for the space that we're working in. What did get great feedback is the sliding whiteboards up against the wall there. Teachers liked that, students liked that. So the sliding whiteboards are a hit. But so are the things like the cabinets that are off onto the side. All the cabinet faces are writable surfaces as well. Teachers really like that because they can put stuff up and leave it. And it's not interacting with the kind of teaching, interactive space. So that was very well received. This flooring is the laminate floor, kind of the vinyl laminate that has kind of the faux wood flooring look to it, which looks great, but when you put the sliding furniture on it, you tend to be a little too slidey. Plus, it's a louder environment with that harder floor than the carpet is. So overall carpet, carpet rooms were better received than the vinyl.
You know, the sliding whiteboards, has that been an item that's been available for a while?
Yeah, but we just haven't replaced those kinds of things.
I was wondering, from a maintenance standpoint, is any?
The maintenance feedback we heard was not anything about the, the wall surfaces. Those, pretty good feedback. It was the desks that had writing surfaces on them. Keeping that clean was a challenge.
Well, we haven't had, so the, I'm just speaking to the mechanism that allows the. You know, a couple of years, you're going around having, because the panel's not sliding anymore or something's getting hung up.
Sliding whiteboards?
Well, there's, well, there's some science classrooms that have had those for like years.
Right, okay.
So, yeah.
So it was, that was my first question, was had they been around for a long time?
I thought you meant these specific ones. No, these ones have only been in since January. I thought that was the question, Mike, sorry.
So, sounds like it's not an issue.
All right, so moving across town to South. A100A is that library classroom. You can see this is a huge upgrade because we put the windows back in the room. We unearthed those. If you remember, this room was a quote-unquote digital learning lab, which was meant for virtual learning. So we had to darken it back in the day. So it was nice to get the windows back in this space. You can see there's their big work tables with writable surface, which works well for this space because this is a, not a room where teachers are always scheduled in. A lot of times we have teachers checking out this space throughout the day. So the, they're coming to work in the library and work in the space or to have a collaborative workspace. So the large tables were great. Cleaning those writable surfaces on the table has been a challenge. It's just hard surfaces to keep bright, white, and clean like that. As you can imagine, your whiteboard on your wall is hard to keep bright, white, and clean like that. So that has been a maintenance concern with both the librarians and the custodial staff. Otherwise, the room is very well received as to how it's been.
What's, are those cabinets on the back wall?
No, those are different writing surfaces. Yeah, like whiteboards. But we have a variety of different writing surfaces in there, I think. I think some are acrylic, I think we might have a glass panel in there.
We're exercising some different ones to see which they like better.
These writing surfaces that are all around, do you have to replace those? Or is there something you have to do to them? Because if you're having a hard time with the tables, aren't you having a hard time with the walls?
No, it's different because people don't expect the walls to be as sparkly as the table they're working on, right? You don't wanna have your, you know, a white shirt and then rub it across, dry erase marker, that kind of stuff. So people want their surface to be very clean and that's a challenge to keep it super clean.
And this is probably a question, answer that you guys already know. Have they suggested, I'm assuming you're using whatever they suggested that you clean those with? And you're still having a challenge, okay.
Students really like it, especially, we've heard from math and science classrooms where you're doing a lot of just jotting and sharing, you know, that kind of stuff. It's a nice surface to use. But we've heard from teachers, they would just prefer to have just the little portable, you know, like a little square whiteboards that we use all the time in classrooms and hand those out and work from those rather than having it affixed to the table. So, but this is good, this is why we do this testing, right? If you go to the next one, Tony? This is 362, this was yours, right?
Yes, this is mine, all right. So in this classroom, we generally, like, the chairs were good. Now, there's two types of chairs. There's the little chairs, there's the chairs in the front that only are about like, they go as high about this chair. And then the chairs in the back go up even higher for the higher desk. And the desks that go, they're high in the back, they don't roll. Like, they really, I don't know, their wheels are weird and people did not like that because they, they don't roll. And I think that's another thing with group work too, since there are different levels, you have to go and make a group with people of the same level. I like the whiteboard. I think, we, we've been able to use like all the different spaces on the whiteboard. My only note on that is that I like how it's a full wall. I think that'd be great in like math and science classes especially. But instead of having a whole wall, since I'm not that tall, I think that if you instead made it college-style where you have two whiteboards or three and they slide up and down the wall, I like that a lot better because then what you're able to do is you're able to write something at a comfortable height and then move it up so that everyone can see it and read it and then continue on the lower board. So I think if you did it, like, the slidey one is the, the one that goes sideways, I feel like you're always are moving it to like not cover up something else. If they moved vertically the boards, I think that that would be a better like use. And I don't know, I mean, it's tried and tested in most lecture halls in colleges, so it's not like it's a new idea. But I like all the writing surfaces and the tables are generally big enough. It's just that there's, the way that they're meant to sit flush with each other is there's a gap and then there's a peg where the, the leg sticks out. And most people haven't discovered that. So the desks don't always, aren't always flush together. Like, they look in there, like, you can see this one's even offset because people, they don't, they get all spinned around and they don't always fit together as nicely as they should.
Excellent critique. And I did spend a day in that classroom with Kirk and did realize how difficult it was. When you're in those high stools and you're trying to push away from a desk because your feet don't touch the ground. If the desk moves and the chair moves, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts going on there. So it was, it was good to learn from that. All right, and then the final one at South High is 364, which you see is more of a traditional kind of student desk space. Oh, actually, Tony, can you go back one more slide? You see the podium in that classroom? That by far has got the best ratings of our teacher podiums.
Yeah, it's good, it's, it's good.
Yeah, people really like that one, so.
That simple pedestal back there?
Yeah, it's just a simple, it has, I think, a cup holder on it and something else, so.
The teacher desk space is nice too, like that, it's like a paint palette shape. It's a good.
You'll see that one, Tony, go to the next one. It's like that, similar. Not as triangle as that one, but it's a rolling activity table, which we'll probably see in a lot of art and science classrooms. But you see some of the same themes going through this. Once again, you know, the idea of the group work, these tables are kind of large. So when you do push them together for four people, you know, it's not as easy to interact with the other folks because there's a lot of table space between you and the other person.
So is the rolling podium new to the classes or what?
No, we've had them in other, other models and other places, but these have been pretty well received. Just because in our classrooms, our teachers can wirelessly connect to the projectors so they can throw their computer down there and work and move around and move it up when they need to and get it out of the way when they don't. All right, so there's some of the feedback and we'll continue to gather that. One of our plans next year is to grab some of each like sample piece and throw it in the library for a week or two and do a furniture petting zoo to allow people to kind of come through and sit in everything and try out everything and get just ad hoc feedback from folks as to what they think. So we'll continue to gather feedback for the next year because then after that, we'll be buying a lot of classroom and student furniture. So we want to make sure we're, we're buying the right stuff when that time comes around.
Are we gonna look at, look at something with the, with the vertical sliding?
We can going forward. I don't think it's been brought, yeah, I think Kirk's the first one to raise it, so we can, we can talk to them about, about that.
As a person who's vertically challenged, I would like to say, I struggle with, like, if you go to a restaurant, I struggle with tall desks, tall chairs, getting up in them, getting, having my feet fall asleep. And I do lecture and it is hard to get, I totally agree with you, and pushing it up. And if you are sitting in the back of the class and having to see things, it's nice to have them up high. So I really like your.
We'll give it a try in one of the rooms.
I think we should.
All right, so the next slide gives you kind of the summary overview of what we had learned. So because we just took out the old lighting fixtures and put in the new ones, we didn't change out any switching or anything else. So the feedback, so it was all on or all off, but with much better lighting than what we had before. Feedback from teachers and students was more dimmable features or zoned lighting or those kinds, which we expect to build into classrooms.
The quality of lighting.
The quality of the lighting is far better than it used to be.
Those are great, those are great fixtures that we're looking at.
And is lighting, are we gonna have more, what's the word? Longer-lasting lighting and more environmentally friendly lighting?
Yeah, it's all LED.
It's all LED, and yeah, okay.
Yeah. As you can see, the flooring I talked about, carpeting is, is winning over the resilient flooring. Although in some of, maybe our small conference rooms or those student workrooms or those kinds, you might throw it in there, it's easier to clean up. And it also has a little different look to it, so there might be some, some vinyl in those spaces.
Maybe with art?
Right, but just in the larger classroom spaces, carpeting is winning.
What's cheaper?
It's about the same cost, yeah.
Lifecycle though, the lifecycle, the resilience is probably less expensive, no?
Correct.
I mean, you're gonna keep, you're gonna keep it a lot longer, so you've got, you're cleaning it, you're polishing it again, but.
And, and you're looking at more carpet squares versus?
Yes, everything is carpet squares.
And then obviously if you get stains or one wears out, then you can replace a few and not the entire room.
It's all squares, yeah.
That's helpful. But the look, the feel, and the quietness of the classroom area with the carpet is just, it's really the way education's going with high schools.
What about bacteria and stuff?
As long as you clean it, it's the same as, you know, something on a floor. You're not mopping in there every night, but you're mopping so many times a week. You're not gonna carpet clean on a weekly basis, but.
It's a commercial-grade product and, and, you know, think about, I mean, next, next, so the resilient flooring would really be about the least expensive thing that we could do.
For total cost of ownership, yeah.
So the carpet squares are basically just the next step up. You know, so I, so I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great solution to, to, for the, for the advantages that are listed right there. And, and, you know, aesthetically too, I think it, it makes for maybe a more inviting space to be in as well, so.
Agreed.
So when we talk about writing surfaces, as I said, the things on the sides, on the cabinets, all very well received. The best surface to write on, people love the glass to write on. It's just such a nice feeling to write on that, that smooth glass. But cleaning and performing and using the porcelain ones, we're getting the best reviews from overall is those. People do like the full height where they have options to write on them. But we'll, we'll try out some of the sliding ones. Furniture, I told you about the chairs, tables, people like their individual tables. And then just the size of the chairs have got to shrink down a little bit. Teacher furniture, as Kirk mentioned, people like the podium and the individual teacher desk, or Ellie did, right? The teacher desk with podium was not, not an exciting feature in people's rooms. So people prefer the teacher desk combined with either the teacher podium and/or the activity table. All right, going on. So some design updates and construction. Hey, we're getting started. We have trailers that have shown up at each of the buildings. So overall site plan, just a review, here's all the stuff that's happening at South going on. The areas in, I don't know, tan, light tan. Those are the new addition space plus the turf field that will be going in. Go ahead, Tony. Let's talk about the bleachers, press box, press box and squad rooms, since we haven't talked about those here at a board meeting yet. Go ahead, Tony. So this is the layout of the bleachers. It's a bunch of row of seats. But you'll see it really fills that space between springside at the top and the track at the bottom. We go up to now a total of almost 3,000 spectators, including 30 spots for wheelchairs and companions seating next to them. And room where that all fits in and people aren't tripping over them anymore in the front row. Press box up at the top. And then, go ahead, go to the next one, Tony. Uh, press box up at the top, um, and then, go ahead, go to the next one, Tony. Uh, this is actually the north rendering, but I threw it here just for reference since both north and south will be very similar. Um, what you'll see is kind of a layout where the, if you look at this cross section at the top, the white line at the bottom would be some kind of masonry brick, concrete block at the bottom, with a horizontal metal paneling slightly above it, and then a vertical paneling at the, metal paneling at the top, to just break it up so it doesn't just look like a big warehouse sitting out there. Uh, north features at the bottom, you see those little square cutouts at the bottom on the white line, because as we've mentioned, north is in, uh, a considered floodplain that has never flooded, but if it should, uh, that is built, that those things allow water to push in and to push out, but during the rest of the year, keep all the rodents and cold and everything else out of that space. Um, north and south otherwise very similar in construction. Go ahead, Tony. There's a example of what it looks like at another school, but that's the idea of that masonry at the bottom, and then the, uh, metal paneling along the sides, kind of what the look. Ours won't be exactly this, but it kind of gives you the feel, uh, of what we'll be going for. Uh, go ahead. Underneath, uh, this is squad rooms at South. You'll see here a visitor squad room and a home squad room that can each hold at a minimum of 100, uh, people in that space. Um, there's a little give and take in each space because of adding things like trainer room and official rooms and those kinds of things. Uh, you'll notice storage in the, uh, in each separate building. Some of it's low storage at the bottom of the bleachers and goes up to higher storage towards the back of the bleachers. Um, but this is everything that we've talked about in that space.
Now, will that alleviate, um, the storage that's in the, um, the garage now?
Yes.
So that those folks will have their, all their space?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Alright, and then going on, uh, this is the visitors bleachers. One of the things that we're going to be doing here is keeping some of the structure underneath that's still in good shape, and re-cladding the top of it with, uh, new seating and the accessible seating. This flips around the other way, so the track is at the top now, and the back of the bleachers is at the bottom. So you see that accessible first row of seating, um, and we get a little more seat, seating overall in the visitors bleachers.
The result is the, it, the visitors side still remains a little off, off center, correct?
No. No, they'll have it all, it'll all line up.
Okay.
How many, how many seats do we have now?
Home, we have 25, at South, 2,500. Uh, visitors around, close to 600, so we're increasing 300 and 500, 800. On the other side of town, they had 1,500, so they're increasing, and then also on the visitors. So a little more at north than at south, as far as home and visitors.
North especially.
Or smaller to begin with. There was a thousand more seats at the home bleachers at South than there were at North and the home bleachers.
They were?
Yes.
Now, though, be, be this, uh, is, yeah.
Which is fantastic.
South has banisters now.
I'm sorry?
They have banisters, they have...
Yeah, they, both of them have handrails and, yep, yep.
All the necessary safety.
And we won't be replacing the track or the field?
No.
No, not for many years.
Is there plans like the, like the, like sample picture to have like theming on it and stuff like that, so it's not just like random metal structure?
Yeah, we're talking about right now, the backside, what we might do there. There's discussion of whether, we have a lot of discussions going on, things like, do we paint them, or do we hang banners that you could, you know, change out every so often, you know, how permanent do you want it versus temporary, that, you know, but...
But it'll definitely be more themed than this now.
And the, the front, the risers, so you have the, the tread that you walk on, the risers will be a school color. So when you look at them from the front, nobody's in them, you'll actually see the school colors. So they're picking out those colors right now, so, yep. It won't just be a big steel metal looking...
Nice structure, yeah.
Yeah. Tony? Alright, so, uh, if you remember, uh, Jim, a few meetings ago, started talking about things in Phase As, Bs and Cs, and we were all confused. Well, that's because the architects switched from Phase 1, 2 and 3 to Phase A, B, and then you'll see there's some sub-primes in there as well, so it's really A, B and C are the three main chunks, right? Each of the three summers. But we have some stuff that happens between those during the school years that you see broken out in the other pieces. So, Phase A are the yellow structures, the admin center at, at South, a couple of classrooms, culinary arts. That all happens this school year. Then, we start the new fine arts addition and STEM second floor, uh, next year during the school year, followed by then, uh, you see C1, which is the darker blue, the auditorium and the commons space. And then C2 is the remaining spaces in, uh, the project. And we start, uh, well, hopefully, next week, if we get, uh, planning and zoning approved by the village council tomorrow night. And, uh, then we're just done three years from now, no big deal.
Actually, less than that.
Yeah, it's less than...
Two and a half years.
Right. Uh, so, that's how it looks at South, keep going there, Tony. So some pullouts, this is, uh, some pieces of the logistics. So, just so you can see, um, right now, we've taken over part of the parking lot with the construction trailer, uh, around both schools. Uh, our construction managers have visited neighbors to let them know this is going on, that here's our, the direct line to the construction manager if there's ever anything that they're concerned about. So we've been in, in close communication with our neighbors. Uh, but you can kind of see this summer is highlighted outside by the field up at the, uh, top, top edge there, and then the parking lot down on the south side there, uh, with the admin center being, or the administrative suite being done on the inside. Go ahead, Tony.
Where's the band going to practice?
No, we still have the whole other field, the main field. Um, portable toilets? Yeah, portable toilets. Uh, so this will get underway real quick, because one of the first things we have to do is that turf field so that we get the stormwater retention underneath it. Uh, Tony? And then the parking lot down below, as I mentioned, that is getting turned around so that the bus side and the visitor side trade places. It's, uh, in some places will be brand new lot, in other areas it'll be resurfaced lot, but it'll, uh, the whole front of the building, between the administrative suite and the parking lot, will be refreshed and renewed. Keep going, Tony? Then you can see as soon as they're done with that, they start work on that new fine arts and STEM addition on the backside. So, that'll get underway right away as soon as they're done with those other pieces. And then, go ahead, Tony? Uh, one of the things that will happen, because we lose the A hallway on the first floor at South, is that through the courtyard, we'll build a enclosed temporary covered walkway for the school, the, the school year, so that students don't have to go up to the second floor to cut across to come back down. They'll actually be able to go out through the courtyard and stay out of the elements and get from one side of the building to the other.
So how...
Yep.
Will that be like tent-like, or will that be actually...
No, it'll be plywood with windows in it, and...
Okay, it's certainly well constructed, they're not gonna be cold, or, right, okay.
Oh, it'll be cooler, but...
Right, but it's not gonna be just a tent.
Not exposed to the elements, no. And, uh, we'll have windows in there so that, uh, you can see into there from the building and those kinds of things. So it just won't be a claustrophobic kind of tunnel.
Yeah, see, I brought up the, I brought up the temperature thing actually at the meeting, and, uh, I was reminded that half the kids show up, you know, when we wear coats to school to get...
Our lockers aren't quite big enough for a big coat.
We talked about, uh, maybe utilizing the existing path.
Yeah, we're, they're still looking at that, yeah.
We still gonna do that?
I don't know, if we will, but we're looking at it, yeah. If we can use the existing concrete sidewalk so we wouldn't have to pour any concrete that we would then eventually tear out, yeah. So, yep, they're still gonna give us some more details on that. But students will be able to go from one side of the building to the other without going into the elements. Uh, go ahead, Tony? So, that's kind of what it looks like right now, but that, as Mike mentioned, that might move a little bit to follow a sidewalk, but that's kind of how it works. So there's little spots along that where there's spots to poke into the building, uh, to the dean's office, college and career center. Uh, where it says access to principal's office, that's really counselor's, so, uh, but... So it's not just to get from one side to the other, but it's to get to the backside of the, the suite that'll eventually open up to the commons. Alright, go ahead, Tony. Here's all the areas that are gonna be impacted, uh, over the summer. So, uh, it's gonna be around that office area in that first floor, a lot of, a lot of construction this year, uh, and getting stuff ready. Go ahead. And then the next phase, as we've mentioned, is that spot on the backside there where it says under construction, that new wing. Go ahead. So, North High, oh, questions on South? I'm trying to not keep you here all night.
Just one, one quick question for graduation. Are the, uh, bleachers, we're not gonna do anything until after graduation?
Great question, Jerry. Uh, the bleacher project will start, is scheduled to start as soon as fall sports end. And they'll work on it over the winter months, and they'll be open in time for spring sports.
Of next...
So it'll start next fall, go through next winter, and then be ready for the following spring.
Okay, I'm, I, I misunderstood that.
So a year from now, the new bleachers will be there.
So it's time next year, it's all done.
Yeah, this time next year.
Right, after the last...
You know, we have such mild winters here that...
Oh, yeah, I was just so...
No, really what they said is, once, the bleacher structures are all prefab, so they tear out the old ones, the old one, the new ones kind of just drop into place. The press box arrives constructed on a flatbed, and they just crane it up into place. And then, all of the squad room stuff is then undercover, and they can do all the work that they need to in that space. Um, so we're working through those details. North High, this should go a little quicker because, uh, some of it's review, so you know, uh, once again, kind of the, light tan is the areas we're touching, which is courtyards and bleacher space. Go ahead, Tony? Uh, featuring again on the bleachers, you'll see here, uh, go ahead. Uh, key feature of this is that it'll be centered on the football field, imagine that. Um, but very similar kind of construction. This one's a little longer and narrower because of the space we have between the track and Prince Street there. Um, but you can, and a slightly smaller here than South High, 2,500. Yes, the, the trees will be removed, but...
Can we save them, or?
No. Um, the construction plan calls for every tree we remove, we'll plant a new one. So, we will, we will not be negative trees at the end of this project. We'll, we'll be up trees at the end of the project. Um, so very similar type of construction, both sides of town. Uh, go ahead to the next one, Tony? A little different, uh, layout for the squad rooms, but the same type of features, except for remember, North High doesn't have a trainer's room in it because North High's athletic facilities are right next to the building, so we don't have to put athletic training out under in the squad rooms like we have to at South. Otherwise, similar kind of space, 100 people in it easily for everything that they need to do into each squad room. Um, same type of storage, uh, facilities and those kinds of things.
Are we, uh, doing any improvements to the snack deck area?
To the...
Concessions?
Concessions?
Concessions, yes. I call it snack deck.
I was like, what, where's the snack deck? I thought I was at a White Sox game all the time. No, it, just the bleacher spaces.
Okay, alright.
So, and then, uh, go ahead to the next one there, Tony? Over on the other side of town, this one also gets centered, uh, but it gets centered by adding to one side of it, not to the other side. So we extend it, the bleachers north so that that makes it then center up. So same type of thing, we'll use a lot of the existing structure underneath, and then add some to the north so that then the bleachers become centered. So, 840 total spectators here, same type of thing, accessible seating, those kinds of things.
Now, is there any way to have the seating so that the, is it baseball diamond that's behind there?
There's a softball field behind it.
Softball.
Yeah.
They have, uh, their own bleachers, or can they use part of this?
Their own bleachers, they're, they're pretty big. So, we would not want this to be, I guess if you really wanted to get up on the top level and look out the way, you probably could watch or stand.
Actually, on the, on the home side, you'd be able to stand in those top rows and see out onto the artificial, uh, practice turf on the backside too, so... Alright, uh, next one, Tony? Uh, we're gonna go over to Prince Street here, go ahead and keep going. So, uh, change that's happened here in the last couple of weeks from some earlier renderings is, I'm actually gonna get up and stretch here. Uh, this corner of the building, if you remember from some earlier renderings, we had a glass corner here to allow more light in, but some of the concerns that came out of, uh, of North High was this is the northwest corner of the building. When we have basketball games in there is in the evening, and when you have low sun in the west, this whole corner would get lit up, and right on the other side of this is a basketball hoop. So, um, along with, uh, just the aesthetics, some of us weren't real excited about the modern full glass corner against the 1938 style construction. So, um, this is where we've kind of ended up. And it, I think it really pays tribute to the original building and still gives us a, a really functional space.
And saves us...
And it saves us about $70,000 in glass. So, uh, all around, uh, we think it's a good choice to make it that way. Uh, really, as you can see from this perspective, once it's done, most people will think that that whole building was a 1938 building. So, we've accomplished a lot of goals there in that. Um, go ahead, Tony, the next one? This kind of just gives you another area, we're still working on what that, uh, what the surface and the layout of, of the courtyard looks like. I, we don't know if it'll be this much brick or not, but, um, we're, we're still working on that design. But that just gives you another look at the, the building from another angle. If you'll remember, those original 1938 doors over there by Ellie, um, those will serve once again as entrances to the new gym. So, they'll come alive again where they're not really used that much anymore.
Well, that gives us a lot more opportunity to sell bricks.
No, the bricks are on the front side of the building.
No, but we can sell those, too.
No, we can't.
Always thinking.
I'll show you the bricks in a second. This is, uh, Prince Street Circle.
It's Prince Street Circle?
Yeah. So right now, it's, it's, um, we, pretty much everything in there is paved, right?
It's, yeah, it's asphalt right now, except for an, uh, peninsula of grass in the middle.
The inner circle.
So you see the squares in the middle of your pavement there, the two rectangles? Do we make those grassy areas?
Yeah, we're talking about a lot more grass than what you see here.
Be nicer for students to have the grass here to go sit out there, yeah.
What I'm wondering is just in terms of, uh, pervious surface versus impervious surface and stormwater management concerns, if, if we go to, you know, we're, we return more to, uh, pervious, is that gonna help us maybe on, um...
That's where the bricks will come in, so, once we lay that out, we'll know how many of those bricks we'll need to do compared to what we have there as asphalt, uh, surface now. So that will play into the decision process.
Taking in, uh, Dan's...
To Dan's point, if we, you know, because currently that circle is asphalt round on you, and you got your inner area that's all grass. So if we keep some of that as a grass area, we're really not losing or gaining.
I think it would look nicer, and I think it would also give a place where students can go and sit on the grass.
Sit on a curb.
Terry, there could always be, you know, bricks maybe by that, uh, walkway into the...
Well, yeah, I, I see a lot of opportunity.
Always up.
Ellie?
So, I know north is, like, right now, this is, um, where our cafeteria is kind of right there, and we have outdoor seating for like lunch periods, and since we're moving the cafeteria further in the building and losing the courtyard, will there be any outdoor eating space retained?
Yeah, it'll be on the other side of, uh, the commons. So it'll be on the south side.
Okay.
So where the commons kind of pokes out there, there'll be a, uh, an outdoor gathering and eating area, kind of, uh, you know where the fourth street circle is?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Off to the east of that, that will be kind of the new courtyard area.
Okay.
The minute there, I thought she was gonna ask if we were gonna bring the dumpsters back.
No, not there.
Well, we could also do straw bale gardening along there, so they can...
Uh, Tony, can you keep going?
Next slide.
Alright, uh, phases for this, you'll see that, uh, as we keep talking, at north, we're moving really west to east throughout this whole project, and that's how the whole... And that's how the whole project is staged, except for you see a couple of spots up there, like the new vestibule will be this, security vestibules. Uh, at least one at each school will be this summer. Uh, and you see this year starts with the white gym. Soon as that's done, uh, they will start working on that new area. So they'll gut the whole, uh, maintenance area, they'll tear down some of that structure and they'll start building up the new gym. And then we move the next year into the cafeteria over the next summer. So, uh, summer of 2020, we do that whole cafeteria culinary arts rebuild. And then the following year starts all over the common space and then the academic wing on that south corner. So, um, it's aggressive, but we believe we can do it.
Have we, um, have we secured an alternate, um, place for the gymnastics to practice?
Gymnastics will go over to South for the next year. So we'll, that's what we're able to do. We looked at a whole bunch of, uh, we were all over the community looking at, could we put them in an offsite location? Maybe creatively partner with third parties or park districts or those kinds of things. And boy, we spent a whole bunch of time on it, never found anything that was truly feasible. So the, the plan all along was to go to South, but we tried to find a, a personal, like, north space for gymnastics for the year. But it, nothing came together. It wasn't for lack of trying.
So how would, logistically, how will that work? Would it, will they be practicing along with the South?
We're still working through, they, they have a meeting, I think, what, next week?
Right now, they would, they would have layered practices one than the other team.
Yeah, so.
That been communicated to?
We're still working out all those details right now.
Just wanted.
It'll be coming.
Getting ready for P, because they're going to call me.
We have a meeting Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, so the meeting is Thursday to work out those logistics, so.
Good deal.
All right, continuing. So we have a construction trailer out there right now along, it's kind of between Prince Street and, uh, the four street circle. Uh, and that's where the trailer will be, I think, almost for the whole project, right?
Entire project.
Yeah. Um, so that's already there and you can see the red right above Kirk's head is where the loading dock is, where we've, uh, kind of fenced in. And we're getting ready for that loading dock construction and Prince Street. That Prince Street Circle for the next year will be a construction area. So there'll be fencing around it, there'll be cranes in there, there'll be all of that construction equipment in there. But fencing separating the students from the construction area.
Is that going to be in the Nicholas's front yard?
Almost. No, fortunately, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Closer to Rick's, actually. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah, Rick said he needed extra place to park his, his front yard.
Put the crane there? Okay, I'll let him know.
Too bad he's not hearing it.
Yeah. Don't miss a meeting. That's what happens. So you could see the, the call out there is that, uh, Prince Street Circle loading dock piece that's being worked on. This summer includes all of that space and the white gym space inside, including a new TV, state of the art TV, radio lab. Uh, both sides of town are getting a lot of life skills, special education areas, uh, remodeled as a, as part of this. So a lot of new spaces coming online to start the year. Uh, go ahead, Tony. Then, uh, you can see the next part that happens is that, uh, uh, construction, the loading dock comes online, but we took over that Prince Street Circle as I talked about.
Did it say eight feet high post, driven post fence?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we want to keep students out.
Yeah.
Go ahead. And here you go, uh, here's the areas this summer that are really impacted. Uh, so the white gym and the adjoining classroom space to that, part of that hallway. Um, and then the current maintenance area, all in earnest over the, the summer.
So displacement of those classrooms too, or how, that's all getting worked out as well?
It is. Uh, we add, uh, above the radio TV studio, we're adding two classrooms above there to gain additional classroom space. So there'll be a radio.
Temporarily or?
No, permanently.
I was wondering tempor, when these go, as these go away though, there's, we're.
We're adding classrooms.
Down.
No.
No.
No, we're just, we're, we're repurposing, um, things. So as people are moving, it's just moving other classes. So there will be teachers that will have to move several times, but.
Okay.
But they got a spot.
All right. Yeah, we're able to stay neutral with our number of classrooms in construction and add classrooms by the end. All right, Tony? Then the next phase, uh, during the next school year is that, that new gym gets built. So that's going on over the whole course of the next school year.
Yeah.
All right, budget. Do we have one of those?
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Yeah, go ahead. Hide that.
It just, it just, uh, sort of piggybacks on Mike's question, um, and maybe some of it's still being figured out. But, um, it would be nice to have just sort of like a, I'll call it a disruption schedule. So that, uh, community members can go on our site and see, okay, the South High auditorium is going to be under construction for this, you know, period of time. So if my child is in drama, I know that they're not going to have a play in the spring of 2020. And here's our plan for supplementing our kids' schedules for drama for that spring 2020. Gymnastics is going to be displaced and we're going to be over at, you know, South High School.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're going to be out a gym at North that this period of time. Uh, it would just be information that would be, I think, nice to have for the community.
Helpful to parents, planning their lives.
Yeah, we have communicated in all of the information that's gone out up to this point about the time that the gymnastics program would be disrupted at North and the auditorium at South. So that, that's been shared, uh, but we'll continue to share that, yeah.
But I'm just saying in a central repository that's easy on the site for anyone to access.
Jill's on it.
Okay.
Well, they're helping us with the timeline, so they're developing graphics, so we'll make it super clear what's online and what isn't.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea because we've been pretty transparent about what we're doing. So that's just a part of the exposure as well.
Those are, I mean, those are going to be questions that are going to be asked by parents on a consistent basis. No matter how much we may have notified them, you know, there are always going to be more questions.
Absolutely.
Well, it's even good to know if you have students in the school, parents can kind of say, well, you know, this is going on, be careful here. You know, just, just good information even with your kids to kind of talk.
And with that, I'll put in a plug that everybody should sign up for Facility Fridays. Which is the weekly email that tells everybody exactly what's going on.
It's really great.
There's 600 people on it.
600 people so far.
That's great.
That's actually nice.
That's a way every week to at least get something delivered in your inbox so you know exactly what we're working on and what's going on. All right, project budget. Uh, here's how it breaks down between the two schools. So remember, we designed around needs, not necessarily, uh, price. And this is kind of how, when you look at the bottom line costs, how it works out for the, the budget. But you can see those phases. So when somebody asked, I think Don asked as to how much we would need to issue bonds, this is how I did that quick math, was by adding up those phases. So generally speaking, phase one, or phase A, phase A is this summer. Phase B, uh, start after this summer and go through next summer. And then phase C is then the, the last year of construction. So that's kind of the fixed costs for those. Go ahead, Tony? So here's how it breaks down. Uh, North and South hard costs at the top come out to be a total of about 98 million. Then you can see we have about 8 million in contingency and then the other costs underneath it, coming out to that total G max number of 122,135,830. So that's the number that, uh, White has guaranteed that all of this stuff will fall into that bucket. And if it goes over that, they're responsible for that. So if construction costs go above that, White's responsible for it. The next column, go ahead, Tony.
So before you flip over.
Go back, Tony.
Nope, it's fine. Furniture, 5 million in furniture. Is that's new furniture for just rooms that are touched during construction? That's not complete furniture in both buildings?
No, it's all of the new, all of the new spaces for furniture, but we also have to fit into that things like equipment. So, uh, certain equipment we have to, to bring to that space. So like, an example would be in the Commons, we're going to have a small cafe in there. So if we want to put warming ovens or microwaves or a coffee maker, those kinds of, that comes out of that furniture buzz, budget as well.
So most of the school's classrooms, the furniture will be what it is today?
As part of the master facility plan. Now, we hope that we have contingencies left at the end and those kinds of things, that then we could apply to those spaces. But this is, was always meant to be a jumpstart on furniture. And then we know that this is an area we'll have to address in the coming years.
Well, I, I'd like to reiterate a point that I've heard you make before is that instead of buying all of the classroom furniture all at once, maybe making some mistakes, um, you have it over a period of years and then it's, it's on a cycle as well.
Yeah, ultimately, I would like the district to be set up in a replacement cycle. So that you have somewhere a spreadsheet that shows this room was replaced this year and it will next be replaced this year. And everybody knows what that cycle is, we can build in long range, a budget for furniture replacement costs. And then we don't end up in this spot 20 years from now where we have every classroom with aging furniture in it. That there's a, a constant ebb and flow of that.
I have a question about that cafe. Is that going to be with staff too, type of cafe? Meaning is it a coffee shop or?
Yeah, yeah.
And we're going to have, it's going to be staffed?
Yeah, by the food service.
Oh, by the food service people, okay.
Yep.
Starbucks.
Kind of, you know, but as long as it's profitable, they'll keep someone out there obviously, so.
They like that idea because.
No, I like the idea.
That's profitable to them all hours of the school day and before and after school.
Oh, I, I like it. I think the, the students will like it too, a lot.
I think so too. Because I think people don't like waiting in drive-through lines before school. It's easier to come into school, get a coffee or something.
And we'll have a lot of grab and go type items in there, like what you see at a, a cafe.
Is that going to, uh, be affected by the, um, uh, lunch program?
We'll have to, we'll have to have a.
We're looking at that right now. There are, there's other schools that are doing it, so we're going to find out how they're doing it and do it that way.
Because, you know, we do want to sell a cookie now and again.
Well, you have to have the ability that they could assemble, uh, a free lunch with the offerings that are in there. So there's ways of doing that, that other schools do it, so we're, we're taking a look at how those programs work. All right, uh, next part is our costs. So you can see there's 14 and a half million dollars in costs, uh, that make up part of this budget. This is all the things that we're responsible for that are outside of that G max contract. So we're on, we're on budget for all of these things right now. And you've heard Jim talk about some of these things like asbestos abatement. And, uh, we have last summer's projects with the air conditioning and safety projects in there as well, because those are outside of the G max.
So on these, many of them are already locked numbers done.
Already done.
You know, so when you look at the 14 million and it says owner's cost, there's not a lot of variables left in here. We've got all the consultants on board signed, we've done, so the only one, and I, I really think we're in good shape with abatement. That's the only one that can possibly be higher if we find unforeseen's and/or the unsuitable soils. But not seeing any of that, everything else, including as you can see, the AC projects in there. That was the final number of all in for AC, uh, 4.4. So there's not much left here that would bring that owner cost higher.
All right, so the way that all folds together, Tony, the grand reveal. Uh, G max number, our owner costs, and that's how we end up at that amount that we went to the referendum for. So the amount we're keeping a close eye on, that is the real one that's in flux here right now, or that we're, we're keeping a super close eye on, is that contingency number that's under the total hard costs. That's our, our dollars for any additional things that we try to bring into this project or to watch out for anything that could go wrong in the course of the project or be an overrun. That, this summer's contingency has been inside of a lot of the bids, there's allowances and those kinds of things. So really, we believe that that's the contingency that's left there for kind of phase B and C, uh, that we're looking at. But we're going to bring you an alternate here in a second, so you'll kind of see how this works.
And just, just to clarify, that means that if some of the contingencies that are built into those contracts are not utilized, that could go back into the 7.8.
That's correct.
Although they believe we'll use all of them, but. But yes, I asked that same question, like, hey, can that go up? And they're like, well, yeah, but it's unlikely, you know, so.
If all goes well and there's money that's still there in that contract, we don't pay him that, we get that money back.
Okay. Yeah.
And I know Jim will be vigilant in that regard.
You can be sure of that.
Orders will be hard to get through me.
All right, so, uh, the contingency though that sits there, uh, is for unexpected things or are for, sometimes there's going to be a couple of projects alongside this that are within the, the vision of the project, but might not have been totally within the scope that we had built out before. Um, but going through the core committee is the first step for this. And then if the core committee agrees, an alternate will come to the board to see if the board agrees as well to spend some of that contingency for alternate projects that make sense at a certain point in time within the larger project. So go ahead, Tony. So here's a potential alternate that the core committee is recommending that we do this summer, that we would use contingency funds for it because it makes a lot of sense to do it right now at this time. So go ahead. The brown line in the middle, it's the same project. Uh, the part on the left is landscaping, the part on the right is hard construction. This is the front Main Street entrance at North High. Uh, this is where, uh, the main stairs are off of Main Street. They come into what will be now the secured vestibule. Uh, because we were doing so much concrete work, we specked this out as well as a project alternate. Uh, we have several things that match up with our project, uh, goals here, starting with that wheelchair ramp that's up to the north. Uh, our wheelchair ramp right now has a spot where there's some grading problems and the, the concrete landing doesn't match up with the wheelchair ramp. So there's a, a change in gradient. Also, the wheelchair ramp goes up at a pretty good angle and does not have curbs on it. So right now you could have somebody in a wheelchair, make it up to that top level and go off-road and actually kind of roll down that whole hill down to Main Street. Uh, so we have some real accessibility concerns on the north side there. On the south side of the entrance of the stairs there, you'll see a new, it says new concrete sidewalk with connection with curb. What to existing. That is the correcting the sidewalk to nowhere so that the folks walking outside of Janice's office don't end up in the ditch anymore. Uh, they actually can make it to the Main Street entrance. This also includes new concrete stairs. The stairs there are deteriorating just due to natural wear and tear and salt and all of those kinds of things. It's a very high-traffic location, as you know. And in front of those currently are the Education Foundation bricks, which are taking a beating because of all of the salt clearing that has to happen in that spot. So we're proposing putting a concrete patio there in place of the bricks, then moving the pavers between the concrete patio landing spot and the sign. So that during the winter months, we wouldn't clear the, the snow off of the pavers and beat them up. Um, but then when we don't have snow on the ground, days that aren't yesterday, um, you would actually be able to, you know, see that feature between the, the concrete patio and the sign. Um, so this includes all of the concrete work and all of the landscape work, including the moving of the Ed Foundation pavers. Estimated cost right now is at a cost of 81,300. And the recommendation from the core committee is that we do this now. White has said that the concrete bid came in at an amazingly low number and that if we were to rebid this out in the future, we would not get this kind of a deal. Um, since these are all, you know, things around accessibility, things around, the stairs are eventually going to have to be replaced, they're deteriorating. The fact that we have an accessibility issue to the south with the sidewalk to nowhere, um, that this makes a lot of sense.
We're working on this area anyway.
We're working on the front of this area anyway, yeah.
There's an economy now that we, we, we want to take advantage of.
Absolutely.
And as a result, then, at the end of this summer, both on a small scale, the front entrance of North, and at a large scale, the front entrance of South, will both be beautified, as well as secured. And accessible, and all of those things that we're worried about. So, uh, check, this checks a lot of boxes. So, um, I, my plan was not to take this to a vote, just to get a thumbs up, thumbs down, unless it looked like the board was split, and then we could talk to Nancy about a formal vote. But is there anybody that has any concerns with us moving forward with this, or are we good? Thumbs ups? It's not a formal vote, it's, I mean, it's within the thing, it's within alternate, we're good?
Straw poll.
Did I miss something?
All right, straw poll is good.
Is it up or down?
Um, I'm, I'm, I mean, majority rules, yeah.
Majority rules, all right. So, uh, we'll roll this into the project over this summer, and get this working.
And it's a perfect opportunity for anybody who would like to purchase a brick.
A foundation brick, yes.
Now would be a great time, because if we're gonna move them, they'll be all brand-new, so...
Go to the Ed Foundation web...
I think if you buy enough shares, enough bonds, you should be given a brick. Hundred thousand dollars, Mary?
Sure.
Interesting.
Here's your brick.
All right, last slide, Tony. All right, here's all the stuff that's up and coming, the next big thing, it happens tomorrow. Hopefully, the village council approves all of our permitting, and, uh, we can start, uh, right away with this.
Let's pause there for a second.
Yeah.
So, just to, I said something at the council meeting, um, at the workshop the other night. Village has been very, very cooperative, the staff has been very cooperative throughout this whole process to get to where we are now. And, I know that we haven't always had the best cooperation over the years, and so... But with this, with this project, from the beginning to where we are now, they've, they've, they've found ways to say yes to things, and be, you know, be helpful. And that's to their credit, and we should be thankful for that, I just wanted to...
And their vote's tomorrow?
The vote is tomorrow.
We can even give them a brick.
We could give them a brick.
Everybody gets a brick.
You get a brick.
No, it's been great.
It's been great, and there, and there's things that, you know, you, you touched on the, the, um, uh, the water, uh, the flood vents, uh, on the, at the, at the bleachers.
Right, for those, the vents themselves, we also went for a variance, because, uh, the, the code says that in there, the washroom should be two feet above grade, which our architects felt was excessive, plus it would involve some extreme ramping inside of the squad rooms. They were, worked with us to come down one foot above grade, so they, they, little things, but they add up to be significant costs for us, that they've been willing to work with us for.
Height, things, things that are being considered, I'm just, there's, there's ample things that if they wanted to, could have said, no, these are the, these are the rules, that's it. And, um, and instead, um, they're being, you know, it's, what can we do to help? And it's, it's appreciated.
It's been very supportive of it.
Thank you, village council.
Something we need to...
We'll thank them more after they vote.
There you go.
Yes, we will, and that'll be tomorrow night, so I will be there for that. Then, the next two big dates on your calendar are groundbreaking ceremonies, uh, at South and at North, May 6th. These are both before bor... well, they were before board meetings, yeah, now. Now the 6th is come, and then you don't have to come to a board meeting after it. Uh, the 20th is before a board meeting, so ceremonial, groundbreaking. Jill's working very closely with White's, uh, communication team to put together those events. So you're all invited to attend those, and put a shovel in the ground. And then, we, we're working.
Last one was the turf at the football team, football turf.
All right, so any questions on this? I know it was extensive, but, you know, about every quarterly, you need one of these where you kind of get caught up on everything, so... All right, well, thank you.
Good job, thank you. Pedestrian safety.
All right, um, so I have one update, uh, back to the village of Downers Grove. I've been working closely with Dave Fieldman and his staff on things that we can do, uh, short-term and long-term to improve safety and vehicular, pedestrian safety and vehicular traffic, easy for me to say. At, around both schools, uh, the village and the school district, uh, village administration, our administration, have agreed to partner with bringing a third-party expert to study, uh, around our schools, and to make recommendations for improvements. So, uh, we're sharing, whatever cost there is, we're gonna share in that cost, and whatever recommendations come out of that, we'll work through together, to figure out how to best implement those things. So that'll, those recommendations, we expect over the summer to be coming in, and then we'll take it to our respective boards, after that.
Which we, which will also, um, we have drafted out an IASB resolution, which you all should have received. We've done some preliminary work with the IASB. Uh, they want to do some more work on that resolution, so that it's ready to go, uh, in November, for approval. The thing is, our board has to approve it before they can continue to work on it. So what we're asking the board to do now, is to review it and approve it as-is, with the understanding that it will change, over time. And hopefully, to, what is it, what do you need to do to give me, at this point?
You're gonna give Nancy the ability to work on it, and whoever the board president is at the time...
Thank you.
Time to sign off and submit it, or the, the authority to sign off.
To sign off for the board, to submit it. So we won't have the opportunity to vote on it again, um, in order to get this done in time.
Right, so you're voting on it in draft form later on tonight, with the authority of Nancy to continue working, and board president to authorize it and submit it.
Nancy, this is terrific.
Well, thank you.
This really is.
We, it was a joint effort, Hank put a lot of time in on it, and we're hoping that the IASB and Ben Schwarm, who is their legal representative, is going to put some real legal teeth into it. And as we looked at what happens across the state, um, for us, it's not really, I think, gonna impact a lot, except for perhaps in front of South. Because the speed limit in front of South is forty miles per hour on Sixty-third Street. But it will impact some of our other schools in the, in the immediate area as well, so...
Are we gonna read the resolution out loud, um, tonight, either now or when we...
It's under action, so...
I think it would be great if you, if you, if you read it out loud, so people can hear it, if they're listening on the recording, and that sort of thing.
Uh, we could, we could, we could.
Happy to read it.
You're gonna have to read it, because I can't open my thing.
I got it.
Okay.
All right, let me get to the page with the actual resolution. So, uh, there's, I'll read the resolution, there's a rationale attached to it as well, I won't read the whole rationale. So, um, what we're proposing to the, that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall, urge adoption of legislation that requires traffic calming measures in front of all schools, that include but are not limited to, reduce speed limits to twenty miles an hour or less within one block of the school from any direction on all federally-designated municipal routes, or Illinois Department of Transportation-designated local roads, or minor collector roads. Two, enhanced speed limit signs to increase motorists' awareness. And three, in addition, consider other common-sense traffic calming measures to mitigate speeds and cut through traffic in the neighborhood, such as increased police enforcement, striping, islands, speed bumps, et cetera. And so, and then there's rationale underneath it, but that's what, later on, the action item would be to authorize Nancy to continue, Nancy and I to continue to work with ISB on wordsmithing, and those kinds of things, for an ultimate submission of a proposed resolution.
So what we found in working on this, is that if you go down Main Street, in front of North, the speed limit is actually twenty-five miles per hour.
Yeah.
Drops to twenty in front of, of St. Joseph's.
Mm-hmm.
And then, of course, you have that strange traffic pattern. In front of South, it's forty miles, it's, it's twenty-five miles an hour on some of the side streets, but it's forty miles an hour on Sixty-third, because it's a county road. But, if you go, as you continue to go down Sixty-third Street, you hit some elementary schools. And while the assumption is that this, it drops to twenty-five miles per hour, I could not find a traffic, a traffic sign that indicated that.
No, it doesn't.
So, it'll be interesting to see what kind of uptake we get.
But, it should help with a traffic light, which has been approved for there.
Correct.
On the other side.
And Sixty-third, yep, that's been approved by the county. Um, they're working on engineering for that location right now, and budgeting. Uh, village of Downers Grove, much more, you know, in the, the spirit of the cooperation we've talked about. When that, when that budgeting comes in from the county, the cost is split between the village and the county. The village has told us that they will make that a priority budget item. If they have to move things around, that they will not be the limiting factor in that spot, in that stoplight being installed. That they will make sure that they do everything in their power to get it there as quickly as possible. So it's kind of up to the county to work through their engineering part now. But, I've been assured that it is a priority for them, and they're working on it as well.
The other thing we'll be exploring with Illinois Association of School Boards, which is, which Terry actually brought up, is that a lot of the traffic signs say, during school hours, when children are present,
Yeah.
what exactly are school hours?
Yeah.
Because if you have children walking across the street at six o'clock at night for a band concert or a play, isn't that a school hour? So, we'll try to get some teeth around that as well. Okay, freedom of information request.
To receive, to taken care of.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we need a motion to approve the consent of which, consent agenda, which consists of the personnel report, appointment classified two thousand nineteen, twenty accelerated tenure, fourth-year full-time renewals, transfer position classified, the personnel report resignation certified, resignation classified, personnel report termination classified, financial pages. Appointment to DuPage Area Occupational Education System, D-A-O-E-S, Board of Directors, thank you Gina. Acceptance of donation District Ninety-Nine Education Foundation grant.
And student tours.
And student tours, sorry.
So moved.
Mike moves?
Oh, was it?
Why? That's okay.
I didn't know that.
No.
Don, are you seconding?
I'll second.
Don is seconding.
I'm withdrawing my motion. So, Don, 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 make the motion.
Okay.
Don Renner moves.
I'm going to second.
And Mike Davenport seconds.
Thank you, gentlemen. Don Renner.
Hi.
Mike Davenport.
Hi.
Cheryl Fuller.
Hi.
Dan Nicholas.
Hi.
Terry Pavasich.
Hi.
And Nancy Cupca.
Hi, motion carries, we move on to the recommendations for action. We need a motion for the approval of resolution on two thousand eighteen tax rates.
So moved.
Sorry. Mike and Don, I...
Mike and Dan.
Dan, sorry, thank you. Mike Davenport.
Hi.
Dan Nicholas.
Hi.
Terry Pavasich.
Hi.
Don Renner.
Hi.
Cheryl Fuller.
Hi.
Nancy Cupca.
Hi, motion carries, we need a, a motion on the approval of Food Service Management Company renewal. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to read the whole thing, I, I don't have my thing, can't open. Motion for the Board of Education to authorize continuation of the food service contract with Chartwells for the two thousand nineteen through twenty school year, and that the administration be authorized to sign the attached contract renewal agreement for food management services nonprofit food service program.
Uh, I move that.
Terry moves?
I'll second.
Mike seconds.
Terry Pavasich.
Hi.
Mike Davenport.
Hi.
Cheryl Fuller.
Hi.
Dan Nicholas.
Hi.
Don Renner.
Hi.
Nancy Cupca.
Hi, motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to accept the quote of one hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred sixty-six from Liberty Mutual Insurance for builder's risk insurance for the period ending September first, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the administration to sign and execute any documents required to obtain this coverage.
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Don?
Mike Davenport.
Hi.
Don Renner.
Hi.
Cheryl Fuller.
Hi.
Dan Nicholas.
Hi.
Terry Pavasich.
Hi.
And Nancy Cupca.
Hi, motion carries. And finally, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the draft IASB resolution on pedestrian safety, and allow the draft president to accept changes, excuse me, the board president to accept changes to the draft that are in the best interests of the district, and to sign and submit the finalized resolution on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Cheryl and Mike.
Cheryl Fuller.
Hi.
Mike Davenport.
Hi.
Dan Nicholas.
Hi.
Terry Pavasich.
Hi.
Don Renner.
Hi.
Nancy Cupca.
Hi, motion carries, thank you all. Finally, we move on to new business policy committee report, first reading.
Uh, you'll notice there's several, uh, board policies for first reading. Many of these are cleanup and grammar recommended out of press. There are, there is one here that is, no, two here, that are our own policies outside of press, which are websites and social media, guidance and counseling program. As part of the, um, work of the policy committee, we now have a regularly-scheduled rotation of returning policies that are outside of press, so we reviewed all of those. Uh, the only ones that came forward with recommendations for changes were those two. So, uh, this is first reading. If you have any feedback or comments on these, or questions, you can direct them to me, Dan, or Rick, and, uh, they will be up for approval next month.
So the new policy in press, targeted school violence program, and correct me if I'm wrong, Hank, we are already, um, meeting requirements of that policy, currently with our school safety... I don't remember what the official name is.
School Safety Committee.
The School Safety Committee already meets the, um, requirements of that policy, but press now has a policy covering that you have to have that. The websites and social media, um, the changes on that one were substantially, instead of requiring a district employee to turn over a password to a social media site used, used, they, we could now require them to turn over full access to that social media site.
There's laws around requiring people to surrender their passwords. So, uh, instead, if it's a district-sponsored account, this is, this really comes in a place when somebody leaves the district most of the time.
Uh-huh.
So somebody's running a cross-country website, and on there is everything about the cross-country team and everything else. Well, that's been made to support the cross-country team. If the coach should leave the district or step down, we would want them to surrender that account to us. The way it words now, is that they would have to surrender their password. There's very strict laws around forcing people to surrender their passwords.
Okay.
So, since the account is work-for-hire, and it's owned by the district because of the work, we just want them to surrender that account to the district, not necessarily their password.
And the last one was just a name change, to be consistent with what we're actually calling.
All right, thank you.
All right, so any cha, any concerns, let us know over the next month, and these will be back next month.
Great, we're moving on to the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to the district. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications and announcements. Report on the legislative education network of DuPage.
I was unable to attend last meeting, Hank, did you?
Yeah, I went. Um, a lot of the, you know, there's a lot of bills moving through right now, so a lot of updates on those things. Over the last month, I've made two strips, two trips to Springfield, to advocate for legislation on behalf of District Ninety-Nine and Lend. Uh, we've been successful in many of those things, so, um, that was pretty much the update.
And in fact, our own Dr. Thily was recognized at the DuPage County, uh, Association for his, for his work at Springfield.
For what? I was recognized by DuPage IASA for representing DuPage County in Springfield.
Awesome, very good, thank you.
I was in the bathroom and missed it, but...
She heard about it.
She heard about it.
So, can I ask, when you were down there, did, uh, did you actually get to meet with any legislators?
Yes, quite a few. Um, so, uh, Tara Costa Howard, who has a sliver of us, has been very receptive.
Yeah.
She was a District Forty-One board member. Suzie Clowady? Clowack, Clowack, thank you. It's getting late in the evening. Put aside a lot of time to meet with us and get to know some of our concerns. John Curran has been very receptive, uh, to work with us, so quite a few. And then, you know, I met, because we were in a team meeting with folks, I spoke to other legislators that are outside of our district, but also in DuPage County, so, um, worked...
Yeah, Stava Murray, no?
No.
Surprise.
I didn't, I didn't, but I did not make an effort to reach out to her.
Sure, sure.
I left, I left that up to my, my teammates.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to School Association for Special Education in DuPage County, um, they, uh, just, just some minor things to report. The Secretary's of State staff came on site, and they've got all of their students, uh, registered with state identification. They're continuing to recruit for a multi-needs administrator, and, um, they got a hundred percent district satisfaction survey participation, so we're waiting, and staff satisfaction surveys back, but we're waiting to hear the results of those. Ninety-Nine Education Foundation?
Uh, yeah, we've been doing a couple things to, uh, to try to encourage more board members. Uh, we, we are looking, so anyone who would, uh, like to even submit someone's name to, uh, to join our, our group, um, because our students need it. And, uh, we are also, uh, donated to the Attainable Futures, which is coming up for our sophomores, and that'll be, um, April thir- and that'll be April 30th. And then, we've also been working with the avid students to do their banquet at the end of the year, and we give them scholarship money. So that is the 1st and the 9th of May. So those are the two activities that we've been doing lately, and we'll just keep plugging along, but we do want board members.[1659.04]